Six was withdrawn.
Yeah, yeah.
Simon, six was withdrawn.
It's literally following a discussion with the applicant because of updated information with regards to phosphate category.
You did actually tell me.
Yeah.
Yes, I've not had enough Lucas A, clearly.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've got three applications, one, five, and yeah, sorry, one, three, and five. Okay, so that's a significantly shortened agenda, which is marvelous. So moving swiftly on to DMO one, which I believe is going to be Carlton Langford presenting. Carlton, over to you.
Evening Chairman, can you hear me? Thank you. Just upload the presentation. Okay Chairman, can you see that?
Yes, thank you Carlton, crack on then.
Right, application DMO one tonight, the application at the communication station at the junction of Manor Road and Grove Lane in Froom. The proposal is for the installation of a new replacement mask on the site to carry the new 5G capability. It'll be erected on a 20 metre monopole, 12 number antenna, and three number new equipment cabinets alongside this will result in also the removal of the existing 17 and a half metre high monopole on the site, two of the original equipment cabinets, and some ancillary development there too, which is basically connecting to the power etc. Okay. Before I go on, just remind members of the updating sheet there that since I published my report, we have received some additional comments on the application objections, but none of these objections raise new issues, so nothing over and above that which is already included in my report. Okay, thank you. Right, so this is the location of the site, it's within the Maston Trading Estate. There we go, so this is a plan of the site, it's, you see on the corner of two roads here, so you've got a public footpath running around here. At the moment, you've got a pole in the middle there, and some equipment cabinets either side. As part of the development and changeover, obviously we can't, the applicant can't remove those and then put up a new pole, you know, because they want to maintain the signal in the area. So what will happen is they'll erect on the site in a different location, which I'll show in a second, the new cabinets and the new pole, and then these will be all removed once that new pole has become operational. So this is the elevation of the site as it exists at the moment, so you've got the 17 and a half metre high monopole, and you've got several cabinets on the site. Okay, you can see the backdrop of industrial buildings within the industrial state. So this is the layout for the new proposal, I think it's probably better that we see it there, so that gives you a nice indication of the increase in height of the pole compared with the original one. In green there, that you'll see the new cabinets that will be coming onto the site, including a cabinet around the base of the pole. The other cabinets will be removed once this new pole has become operational and the cabinet's operational. So that's a picture of the pole as it existed on site at the moment, giving an indication. Hopefully everyone's been down on site and seen that. That gives you a better idea of the pole within context. Okay. And again, the arrow points to the site on the corner of the road here, of the two roads, and you'll see that it's predominantly within the Maston Trading Estate here. That's a certificate to show that the development complies with ICN IRP regulations with regard to public exposure to the equipment. Okay. The, you'll note that the application site, as I've written in my report, is in half a kilometre away from the nearest education facilities, that being the closest school to the site. It's also more than three kilometres from any statutory safeguard zone, and these could include aerodromes, explosive storage areas, or any technical sites that register themselves as a technical site. So the application for you tonight, as a replacement telecommunications site, as an upgrade to 5G, has been recommended for approval, and you'll see the conditions which I have attached to the recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Carlton, thanks very much. We have one question for you before we go to the speakers. You said half a kilometre away from an education establishment. I'd like to think I know that area fairly well. Which education establishment is barely half a kilometre away?
It's the Christchurch School, I think.
Okay.
Let me just, if I just, oh, I can't do that.
Crow flies, yeah. Crow flies.
That off.
Yeah, yeah, well that's because it's crow flies, and being very generous with the meter which as well. So, okay.
Right, if I, okay, it's in my report there, the site is located 550 metres from Christchurch School, and 755 metres from the Vanti Park School. Okay? And even further away from the educational colleges etc.
Well, there you go. Must be a very big crow. Thanks very much. We've got public speakers in no particular order. I've got in opposition Dr Erica Mallory Blyth on the phone. Are you there, please?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you very much. You have up to three minutes from when you start, and thank you very much.
Thank you. So my background is over a decade in NHS medicine, followed by around 13 years researching health effects of radio frequency radiation. And I'll give you five facts that are little known. Firstly, the safety limits mentioned here, the ICN IRP limits, they're set many orders of magnitude too high for legitimate biological protection. They were set in the 90s, and these are now obsolete. So fact number two, it's no surprise that radio frequency radiation has now been shown to cause serious biological effects below these limits, and that would include increased cancer risks, nervous system disruption, reproductive impairment, and many more serious health issues. The mechanism responsible for some of these is oxidative stress and cancer. So radio frequency radiation was actually designated as a Group 2B possible human carcinogen in 2011, but the evidence for this carcinogenicity has elevated very substantially since that time, and please refer to the references in the 2020 consensus statement that's been submitted as evidence. So experts are calling for this now to be re-designated as a Group 1 known human carcinogen. That would put it in the same brackets as tobacco, asbestos, and X-rays. Fact three is that some individuals are certainly more vulnerable to this kind of radiation than others. Children specifically, and you must check that cases frequented by children do not fall within the beam of greatest intensity, but also the elderly, pregnant, infirm, and those with metal implants, or higher occupation exposures would also be considered more vulnerable. In addition, people with electromagnetic hypersensitivity can be disabled by their severe EMF exposures acutely, and common symptoms would include headaches, sleep disturbance, dizziness, tinnitus, palpitations, and many more affecting multi-systems. Medical guidelines for management of this condition make clear that the avoidance of these exposures is key to recovery, and disability and compensation cases for those with EHS are already being won, and will continue to escalate in this country. It's very important to note that in this case, at least two of the residents in close vicinity of this mask do have electromagnetic hypersensitivity, and further emissions could be disabling to them, and might legitimise legal actions by them against the responsible body. Fourth, animals and plants could obviously be affected by a similar mechanism, and our ecosystem is also already struggling. And five, but by no means least, is the issue of informed consent. It's very, very important that people give fully informed consent, and I would ask how well you feel informed about the scientific and medical evidence as a group. I asked for the specification of this mask proposal in terms of the emissions, but I gather this has not been provided to residents, and without this specification, it's impossible to determine compliance. Compliance with the ICN IRP limits in no way gives assurance of safety, but in this instance, even that compliance is not being verifiable to residents. Safer, more reliable access would be provided by fibre internet. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thanks for sticking within three minutes, it's very refreshing, and thank you for the information. Next speaker is Peter Harris, please. Mr Harris. Silence is deafening, so we'll...
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, thank you. Again, you have up to three minutes for when you start, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving me the chance to discuss this and give you some information as best I can. First of all, I think it's important to understand that all of the major political parties in this country support the rollout of 5G at the fastest that we can do it, basically. Indeed, the West Midlands, all the local authorities have got together to set up an operation so that it can be rolled out there extremely fast. But there's another point here, first of all, there's been a site here since 1999. Secondly, the mobile operators, part of their licence have to continue to provide an improved coverage and capacity, that's very important. Thirdly, the increase in height here, which is 2.5 metres, is required to support the 5G installation itself. The nearest residents are 200 metres away to the north east, so should not be affected immediately by the installation at all. I think it's important to emphasise that, yes, it does meet all of the standards comfortably. The proposal is in line with the local and national policies, as evidenced by the recommendation for approval. And finally, I'll keep it very short for you, but the pandemic has shown the critical importance of mobile technology and broadband etc. And the rollout of 5G enhances this significantly. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Shane Collins, Ward Councillor, are you there Shane?
Can you hear me?
I can, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Yes, sorry, my password's on, guys, just, so, thank you, yeah, so this is the first of many 5G applications amended, so we need to look very carefully at this. And indeed, under UK and EU law, a strategic environmental assessment should have been carried out before the implementation of 5G, but it hasn't. I want to make a quick few points covering health, carbon footprint, trees, and the recent judicial review on 5G in Brighton Council. Firstly, health, as mentioned, in 2011, the IARC classified radio frequency radiation in the range of 30 kilowatts to 300 gigahertz, a possible human carcinogen, Group 2B. Since then, research has further developed, but not the classification. To quote Lopez et al., a Spanish paper referencing my consultation comments, "There is a large and growing body of evidence that human exposure to RFR from cellular phone base stations causes negative health effects, including: one, headache, concentration difficulties, memory changes, dizziness, tremor, depressive symptoms, fatigue, and sleep disturbance; and two, increased incidence of cancer and living in proximity to a cell phone transmitter station." Now, we all rely on guidelines formulated by the ICN IRP, which is a private German NGO comprised of 14 members with no accountability or oversight and strong industry links. It's worth noting Lloyds of London will not ensure wireless technologies, yet the ICN IRP says it's okay. There is an unholy alliance of the telecom industry, some scientists, NGOs, and politicians. The policy process has been captured by business and is not keeping up with the science. Increased carbon footprint from energy uses, let's not forget Jevon's paradox, not to mention another generation of old technology being thrown away and a new one being consumed. More rare earth metals, more mining, more carbon. Trees, now plant this idea, 5G is effective only over short distances and does not go through solid objects, including trees. Full-scale implementation of 5G will require base antennae every 10 to 12 houses in urban areas, and any trees that get in the way will be cut down. Lastly, I hope you've been aware of a recent consent order and judicial review against Brighton Home Council as regards 5G masks and health effects. This is significant because it means planners have to make a health assessment rather than blindly accepting the ICN IRP certificate. However, I have been communicating with...
Shane, can you just hang on a moment, please? Could you please stop disturbing the meeting, please, allow the speaker to speak? Thank you. Continue, please Shane.
Great, but I'd welcome a legal opinion for the minute. The applicant has not shown the 50 metre exclusion zone required for a 5G mask. Many of the surrounding buildings with people, have people working in them for eight to 10 hours a day, and they fall within a 50 metre zone. For example, the tyre company is 28 metres across the road. So I really feel it's up to the telecoms industry to prove it's safe, and please note the 200 or so objections and send this application back pending further proof of safety. Thank you.
Shane, thank you very, very much, very informative. Before we move on to Brian, who's going to give some advice, I just, right in the top left hand corner there is Rossiter's Road, which is in my ward. And now, a statement was made by one of the speakers that that's 250 metres away. I'm, either my measurements are wildly optimistic, or Carlton, are you able to confirm the distance between those houses on Rossiter's Road, top left hand corner, and the sites, please? So I don't believe that's, as the crow, being as we're using crows and flying in schools and stuff, I don't believe that's 250 metres away, I think it's significantly closer.
Right, if you could just give me a couple of minutes, maybe just carry on with the other questions, and I'll get back to you Chairman.
Super, thanks very much. Sorry to catch you on the hop on that one as well. Okay, over to Brian.
Yes, just to put the charging case in context, an objecter started a judicial review against the council, and the reason that the case never came to court, for the simple reason that the council realised that in obtaining this certificate, it had failed to take into account some changes in the specification of the mask. So it's not a court judgment at all. What happened simply was that someone brought proceedings, the council realised that it had made a mistake in the certificate process, then consented to the planning permission being quashed. So it's not a judgment of the High Court, it's merely an acceptance by that particular council that they made an error during the process. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Carlton's obviously busy with his little measuring stick, comments from board members whilst we're waiting for that information. Anybody wants Nigel?
Thank you Chairman, just a question for Carlton. Just to say Carlton measuring, one of our other officers who's listening in has measured it, I think measures 197 metres.
Well, there you go, I'm not that daft then, am I? Okay, so it's a lot closer, in other words, which is what I was trying to get at. Thank you. Okay. Whoever that was, cheers. Nigel.
Thanks Chairman. Somebody mentioned there should have been an EIA carried out for this, but wasn't. Can Carlton possibly comment on that, please? Or Simon?
Yeah, again, we've just checked the regulations, and it would not fall into any of the categories that needs to be assessed under those regulations. I think Captain Collins referenced something different to an EIA assessment, but in terms of planning process and procedure, that would have been something that he would have to have got right, but it doesn't fall into any categories.
Thank you.
Thanks, any more for, any more, don't be so tentative Mick, no, you're not normally like that, go on.
Yes, one thing Shane said did strike a note, because I was looking for an exclusion zone, and there is one. I found it in the National Fire Chiefs Council, actually have a diagram showing what it looks like, and Shane mentioned 50 metres, which sounds probably right for 5G. And then I, and then I found, well, that is because it's not safe to be within that area, but it quite often doesn't touch the ground, so in theory, if you're walking along, you may not be affected by it too badly, but I noticed that you say the nearest houses, the nearest residential, interestingly, why would they notice schools with children and not residential? Is that not, something being missed out? Because you mentioned the distance to a school, but it's not mentioned in the officer's report about distances to residential. And I also noticed that we turned down an application called Cherry Grove on some land adjacent to the site where the antennae is going to be placed, and perhaps the officer could comment on that, but we turned that down due to noise issues with the conflict of residential and the operation of a site, which is a hoardage company next to it. But that is only, I've done a calculation, it's only 85 metres, or slightly less, because the metre, the pole itself is actually slightly closer than the position of the old one. So that's less than 85 metres to the mask, and it's getting a bit close, and I know there isn't residential on there, well, actually, there is a residential home of some sort, but anyway, well, comes on that, but I wanted to mention that because I think it's relevant.
Yeah, before we actually deal with that, Carlton, would you put up the map, please, that had your very, very colourful arrow on it, that shows the trading estate, because there's something I want to point out that hasn't been mentioned yet.
You see that Chairman?
See that, if you move on. Move on, move on, 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 that one, okay. Moving, again, I indicated top left hand corner there is Rossiter's Road. If you come down diagonally towards that blue arrow, there is a building there, which is a daycare centre, okay, which is what I wanted to point out. So whilst that is not residential, it is certainly occupied on a, you know, a day by, I suppose you could say vulnerable people on a regular basis. Cherry Grove is slightly, is towards where the curso is at the moment. That, not only does that have a home on there, that's also will be, when they finish building it, residential as well. So there is certainly more residential around there, closer than the, as the crow flies school, that could be an issue. Just to put things in context, I mean, all the residential bases, top left hand corner or just off the screen, but it's awfully close, a lot closer than the, than the, than the school. Mick, do you want to...
Just a quick follow up, is it not relevant that that land has been allocated as housing land? Well, surely it is, because...
Because it's not been built on yet, so...
Well, yes.
Well, unfortunately, them's his rules, and they don't always make sense. Adam. Actually, before we come to Adam, you actually raised some questions there Mick, you raised some questions?
The fact that residential could be as close as that, is it relevant? I mean, I think it's relevant, but in terms of planning for this particular permission, are we allowed to take anything like that into account?
Let's get, let's get the town council's opinion.
Thank you Chairman. The legislation allows for any mask to be erected in a residential area. The restrictions are limited to where there's a high concentration of education facilities, and as I've already pointed out, aerodromes, explosive storage areas, and technical sites, okay? There are numerous sites all over the country where masks have been erected within the middle of housing estates, especially new housing estates. So there is no legislation which says that the masks have to be located a sufficient distance away from any residential properties.
Thanks very much. Simon.
Chairman, just to sort of reflect on the advice Carlton's just given you there, again, if you look at the report pack on pages 27, 28, it sets out for members' benefit how you should consider public health concerns within the context of a setting, material planning considerations, and we've set out there for you how government inspectors have considered the matter where, you know, local residents have challenged a recommendation for approval on health grounds because of proximity to residential areas. So again, just to give you that overview, to provide some further advice to what Carlton said about concerns about areas which would be zoned out.
Thank you Simon. Adam, you were first, and then Matt, please.
Okay, thank you Chair, I just thought it's worth pointing out something in the report, which, it's not out of date, but it leaves an outdated impression, Froomtown Council objection to this proposal, it says the planning committee have no objection to this proposal, however, we are bound by council policy, it's Froomtown Council's policy, and are unable to support the rollout of 5G. A recommendation will be made to council that our current policy is reconsidered. That objection was stated 4th of November last year, on 17th of November, so two weeks later, they had a meeting at full council, at Froomtown Council, and they resolved by majority that Froomtown Council will support planning applications for digital communications infrastructure, including 5G masks, notwithstanding legitimate planning concerns around siting and design. So they had a good debate, over an hour, I suspect many of the people in the room were there, I saw it on Zoom, and I talked about it on other, talked to other parts of the meeting, and there was some publicity after the meeting about it, it's in the minutes, and it's in the agenda reports. So Froomtown Council, if we're asked again, would not object to 5G masks unless it was, unless there were valid concerns about siting and design, as it had been in wards such as my own ward for 4G, I think, infrastructure, where the siting would have been very close to residential areas, and it would have stuck out like a sore thumb. I don't think this is one of those, but I just wanted to correct the impression that people may have had the town council would object if they were asked again.
Thanks Adam. Matt?
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to clear something up, this sort of circular conversation we're having with regard to the distance of residential or otherwise properties to this 5G device, and the reason that schools keep coming up is because in the early documentation, in fact, the old documentation, there has been a claim made, I don't know either way, I'm not an expert on this, on this frequency, but the claim is that 5G has a particular influence on developing minds and developing bodies, that's why schools always come up and not necessarily residential.
Thank you very much. Laura, and then Lucy, please. Lindsay, I'm so sorry, we'll come to you first because you've been patiently waiting... We'll come to you first because you've been patiently waiting and not throwing things at me, which you probably had every right to do.
So you did notice? So what I wanted to say is, the first speaker, Erica Manley Blythe, pointed out that the ICNRP guidelines are based on out-of-date tests done on, and she didn't say that they were done on adults and for short exposure, I understand, only about six minutes. So I don't have great confidence in the tests that the ICNRP based their guidelines on, which in itself would recommend the precautionary principle is taken. Now, I've got a question about the topography of this because if there's land mass in the way, then these schools may be protected because that stops. But if there isn't, but no, well, so that was a query that I hadn't noticed.
It's barely fairly flat.
Yes.
Between the two.
There's some hill there, but they're not being protected by that because that would protect them from the effects. I would say that the fact that 4G masts have been erected doesn't mean it's okay because there's extensive research that just hasn't been properly examined. I understand it's still a subject of a High Court case conducted, being handled by Michael Mansfield. And for me, there should be no progress made on any of this technology until further research has been done.
Just to clarify, the, Mick will back me up on this because he knows Fruen as well as I do. Topography-wise, it's fairly flat. However, what I would say, in the way between there and the school, the Christchurch School, is a big car showroom and a massive dairy factory. And so if it is accurate that these things don't go through solid things, then they are probably by default protected by that. And going the other way to the Avanti School, there is topography there, but there's also a huge amount of residential houses, fairly solid, good construction ones in the way. So I don't know, but they may be protected that way. So Laura.
Two things. One, if we should be considering protecting children and their development whilst they are at school, then we should also be considering the children who are living in the houses. Perhaps babies, people growing, they're younger, they're in the houses for quite a considerable period of time when they're not at school or before they go to school. Do we, we should have responsibility therefore to those children living in the area. And my second, my question is, that land, the map's not there anymore. We had that at board, didn't we? There were more houses going. So there's more house being built closer to that site than they're currently showing. To the planning officer, if this 5G mast was there at the time of that application, would the application have been rejected on the basis of its proximity to a 5G mast?
I'll tell you this one and perhaps Khan, if he's got anything to add, can. Again, it's set out in the recommendation, Council Waters. We've set out how, in terms of assessing the material planning considerations, how decision-makers have to consider the health implications of the proposal. Khan's obviously explained to you the provisions from a zoning point of view. And there's obviously outlined that there isn't a restriction on developing 5G masts in residential areas, and I'm sure we've all seen them. And you can see again by looking at page 27, 28, how Government Inspector has dealt with, considering the issue and how much weight they have given to the certification process that the providers are obliged to go through, which in this case they have. So that would be my advice to you as a group, that you have to determine the application based on the material planning considerations. You've heard from the council's legal advisor in terms of the High Court challenge. Our recommendations for approval and that seems to be the way in which largely government inspectors have approached assessing appeals for 5G mast where concerns have been expressed about implications on health.
Okay, before.
Thanks. And the answer to my second question, which is.
Can I just, on your first one before you ask your second one? As far as the demographic of the residents there, because of course, you know, where the residents are, or in my ward was in, was the industrial park, if you like. The master trading state is actually in Shane's ward. The demographic is older. So on Rossiter's Road, that particular part of Rossiter's Road, they are, I've got to be careful because I actually work with one of the ladies and she'd be really offended if I say that they are something, shall we say, their children are probably gone. They are older people, people of my age, et cetera, et cetera. So specifically, children won't be affected. However, on Cherry Grove, the current housing is empty and about to be knocked down and rebuilt. So there will be children, I've got no doubt at all there. So I think it's one of those, not quite red herrings, but it's one of those things, you know, don't worry too much about children being too close just yet, but there are certainly people living there. But you know, as far as the children are concerned, I would be more concerned with the school, low their proximity. Your second question?
Yeah, which I've already asked, which was if it had been the other way around. So if we had had the application come in and the 5G mast was there, would that have affected the ability to approve that planning application?
I don't believe that it would have, Chair, no.
Okay, thanks. Lucy?
I'd say, Chairman, it's, we're considering a, there's lots of other issues that come into consideration. What we're considering here is a site that in two, for 3G and 4G, and now 5G is considered to be acceptable. Okay, if we were considering a fresh site, a lot of other parameters come into consideration. Specifically, you know, has the applicant exhausted all opportunities to cite the equipment in a better location? Going back to when this site was first considered, in the middle of an industrial estate, some distance from any residential properties, the council and the applicant considered that to be a good location for the equipment and that carries on with this application.
Thanks very much. Lucy?
I feel very uneasy about 5G in general. I think the fact that we're talking about not building masts near schools, but it's finding residential areas makes me feel very uneasy. I have two young children. I certainly wouldn't want to be living near a 5G mast. And I wouldn't want one built near my children's school either. I think the evidence, we don't know the long-term evidence of the effects of 5G on human health and also on insects and bee populations. That echoes mine. Yeah, I'm just wondering if we did decide to turn this down as a board and it goes to the government inspector, would it just be overturned? You know, I feel like we need to represent our communities here as a board as well. And we've got lots of objections, we've got lots of people here today who are objecting to it, who feel uneasy about it. And I feel that that is our job as well, to be considering the people who we represent.
One thing I will say, and those who've been around longer than this council, I, before 2019, will know my views on this one because I used to articulate it ad nauseam. We should be making planning decisions, we should not be making planning decisions based on the fear of being appealed. We should make them on the merits of the case before us. So don't worry about whether it goes to appeal and gets overturned or not. That's beyond our control. We make the decisions here based on the information we've got on the day.
And just my final point is we're, you know, we say we need 5G masts because we need more cellular, you know, frequencies. I think we're too addicted to our phones anyway. Like, do we really need these 5G masts everywhere? That's, you know, I feel like it represents, you know, consumerism and everything that's bad with the world today in a way, so.
Thanks, Lucy. Nigel?
Thanks, Jim. I agree with you, Lucy, over this rampant consumerism that overtakes everything these days completely. There's a couple of points you mentioned about us representing people. Yes, of course, but as well as representing people, we also have to undertake quasi-judicial processes, licensing and planning. So therefore it kind of sits above and beyond just representing people. We all know we have to work within certain frameworks and to rules and regulations. Just a couple of, a couple of quick questions for either Simon or Carlton there. Simon mentioned that there are no restrictions on putting 5G masts up. Obviously, this isn't, this isn't a new thing. It is for us here, of course, but nationally, I'm assuming, perhaps you can confirm this, that there have been 5G masts put up in other areas around the country. We've heard a lot about, a lot of negativity over this, but I've yet to hear any material considerations that would, that would make me vote against an approval on this because it seems so far that there aren't any. Lots of hearsay, but have there been documented cases of actual harm that have been caused by this? And if I may just come back briefly after either Simon or Carlton have answered, please, Chairman?
Yeah. Carlton?
Again, Vice-Chair, I would refer you to the section of the report pack that I've already referenced. So if we have a look at page 28, and I think it, you know, in terms of the questions that you've asked, in terms of the question that Council Taylor Hood asked, if we go to the second paragraph, the court dismissed the challenge on the basis that although the inspector had recognised the perceived adverse effects on health of the public could justify or refuse a planning permission, he had been entitled to place the weight that he did on the professional views of national and international organisations. So it's a difficult one. I think it, I'd advise members, it has to be material considerations. Khan said that this isn't a new site. It's a site that has accommodated a mast for some time. So I'd advise that the threshold of evidence that you need to have that it would cause harm over and above the current situation would need to be pretty, pretty high.
Thank you, Simon. And the word you said there, which for me has summed up, is perceived. There is nothing here that we have, there's no evidence to suggest that something is going to happen as a result. There's no, there are no material considerations against. And therefore, Chairman, I propose we approve in line with the office recommendation on page 30. Thank you very much. Until we get a second, I'm going to continue down the line of speakers. I've got three so far left us to speak. Francis, you're next, please.
Thank you. I've got a number of points I could make about this, but perhaps the most useful and important is speaking as a physics teacher. That we've, we've heard that the mechanism proposed for harm to human beings is oxidative stress. Oxidative stress means an imbalance of oxidizing radicals in the body, too many basically. To create an oxidizing radical by radiation requires ionization. That's what it is. You remove an electron from something and you produce a positively charged oxidizing radical. To do that requires enough energy to be able to remove that electron, send it away free somewhere and leave this oxidizing radical. In, since the beginning of the 20th century, we've understood the nature of radiation. It can be considered as either particles or waves. For a particle, for that particle to have enough energy, it means, considered as a wave, it must have sufficient frequency. Ionizing radiation means all radiation that has enough, high enough frequency, enough energy to do this damage to molecules. That is, the top end of the ultraviolet into the X-rays and the cosmic rays, that's ionizing radiation. Everything above that range. The radiation we're talking about here in the radio range, the individual particles have about a millionth of the required energy to do that. It's not ionizing radiation. Right? That's the reason why radio waves don't cause cancer. Why 4G doesn't cause cancer. Why the MND transmitter doesn't cause cancer. Why radar doesn't cause cancer. It heats us up. That's all it can do because that's the only way we can absorb that radiation. It just jiggles things a bit faster. It is not possible, ask a physicist. Well, put it this way, no scientist can ever say anything is impossible. However, in the 30 years or so, we've been considering the possibility that this kind of radiation might cause damage to human or other tissue. Nobody has been able to suggest a mechanism by which this radiation could do that. Nobody. There is no such mechanism by which it could do that. Okay? And that's the fundamental weakness of this argument about harm. That people have done experiments and suggested that there may be an effect. The effect is always relatively weak, whatever they find, and then somebody else finds that there is none. But fundamentally, no one has been able to suggest a mechanism. And it always helps if you want to make an argument that this causes this, if you can suggest a way in which it might happen. There is no suggested mechanism. To be able to ionize and produce an oxidizing radical, you have to have a particle with enough energy. A single particle. They can't join forces. That's not possible in quantum mechanics. So the, so, but these particles that we're talking about have so little energy in the radio range, we barely even speak of them as particles. We only ever talk of them as waves because they're just, as particles, they're just insignificant. So I've got the fundamental problem about where the danger from these things could arise.
Well, you live and learn.
I just thank you for that.
Did it make sense?
Absolutely, yes. Yes.
Right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm now going to issue the first yellow card for disruption. If there's any more disruption, I will clear the room. Thank you. Mike, you're next.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Francis. All I know is if I use a mobile phone while you're getting hot, which is the heat, so. Yeah, I mean, I respect everybody's views on this and, you know, as you know, we've just coming out of a pandemic and the powers that be told us to all go and get vaccination and it seems to be working, you know. So I'm a bit of one of these people that tend to really go along with the evidence and how it's been said. But not just that. I mean, yes, and I think the argument, we're all, we love our children and that's our next generation. But also progression as well. This particular mast is right in the bunch. If I just looked on my phone here on three, what, three words? And it's right in the middle of a load of businesses and I'm sure they probably really want this. I don't know what date this was actually approved. Simon, what date was it approved? What was the approval date? Do you know? Do you know roughly when it was approved? This particular, no, the particular one, this case here, when was it, when was this, it says it's up for approval, when was it? I don't suppose it was, yeah, validated, sorry. Oh, it was in October. Okay, okay. All right. No, that's, no, no, sorry, when it was put forward. So, okay. Now, all I was gonna, all I was getting at really is that, as you know, I think I'm right in saying technically that if a radio mast isn't approved within 56 days, it has the right to, you know, go to appeal.
To go through the due process of actually making a determination. Yeah, sorry, Chair. Yeah, the 56-day procedure is when, it's a notification process. So this, this application isn't a notification, it's a full application. So it's when, when the decision's actually made, that's when the permission's granted or refused.
Okay, thanks, Simon. So anyway, I won't waffle anymore, but do you know what? I'm going to second Nigel. And I really apologize to these people that have their strong views against it, but I'm one for progress and I think they're safe.
That's fair enough. Okay. Edric? Francis has just blown my mind. Probably not the right thing to say here about this application, but whatever. Okay. So we've, anybody else wish to speak? Lindsay.
I'm going to have another go at this. I think Francis is implying that there is no measurable effect, which I would disagree with, because there is somebody in Glastonbury who goes around with a voltmeter, and he's able to measure one volt at least on your average mast, or the masts that are there, at a distance of one mile. And I know that right next to the mast, it's dangerous for people who are maintaining these masts. I mean, am I not right about that? And also, the need for 5G, I understand it's for purposes of AI, so I would mention that too. And for densely populated areas where the wavebands have all been used up, so I'm just bringing those to the debate, too.
Thank you. Alan, you indicate you wish to speak.
Thanks, Chairman. Simple question, perhaps Carlton or Simon can answer. Who are our guardians in this process? What are their guidelines? And will this mast comply with those guidelines?
Over to the officers for that one.
Chair, I'll take that. So effectively, again, we've set it out in the Report Pack, Council Towns End, the applicant is required in addition to submitting their planning application proposals, to submit the certificate, and I want to read it direct, so I get the initials right. So they have to submit the certificate to demonstrate that it's, if you like, that the process of checking for health has been done, and on this application, they have submitted that. So again, you've heard what speakers, what some members think about that process, but nevertheless, at the moment, that's the process which sits within the planning application framework.
Okay, thanks very much. Adam, this is your second time round.
Okay, just a very quick one. I think this sort of principle I want to think about applies to many things. It applies to vaccinations, it applies to climate change, it applies to communications like this. I think, we've heard it from government, follow the science, respect the science. When you've got a scientist sitting next to us, I'm very grateful, he is our councillor now, putting us right about a few things, I think that's something we need to think about, looking at the evidence, looking at official, and also any alternative interpretations of official, of scientific, rigorous evidence. I appreciate people have a lot of concerns, there's a lot of worries about in this world now, a lot of concerns, but I think we're here and we need to follow the science. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, okay, you've both spoken already, some new points only, please. Mike first, then Francis.
Yeah, I'm just not entirely happy about rubber stamping something which I don't even think really should be coming through planning. I'm happy about signing off the visual aspects of this, and I did A-level physics and did a year of degree chemistry, so I'm not entirely convinced there isn't some sort of mechanism that in the long term, we're talking about long-term exposure here, so I'm not happy signing this off just on some sort of government organized, well, I have my doubts that the organisation used to certify this is completely unbiased in what it does, and that, because there's so much pressure on us to get these technologies and consume them, and I'd like them to get 4G right first, for a start. I use my landline, because the digital connections are sub-inferior, and so I should be a continued aficionado of a landline. So I'd just like to point out that although we think we know the science on this, it could be a very long-term burn, and I'd just like to chuck that in.
That's fine. Francis.
I do have a concern about 5G, but it's not any of the ones that have been raised here. The slightly higher frequencies that 5G uses means it goes more by line of sight, goes round objects rather less well, and Shane talks about the fact that it's absorbed by trees, which makes me wonder how it's going to work in rural areas. And my chief concern about 5G is it's going to increase the digital divide between rural and urban areas. Ironically, they won't be able to supply rural areas. And I think that, for me, that's a worry. When it turns out that we do need 5G, it turned out that we do need 4G and 3G before that, then rural areas and businesses in rural areas won't be able to get it.
Well, some of them can't get it now. That's by the by. Okay, so we've had a proposer by Nigel Hewitt Cooper, seconded by Mike Pullin, to approve in line with the officer's recommendation. And please keep your hands up for a while, because I need to do some serious counting. Lindsay, a new point? If it's not a new point.
I've been asked, can we have a recorded vote?
Yes, but if you put your hands up, I will record your vote, rather than take the time-consuming way. This is one of the reasons why I actually want you to keep your hands up, because I've got a piece of paper, and I want to record it. So those in favour of that, please, raise your hands and keep your hands up till I tell you otherwise. Those in favour, please. All right, so I just go round the room. Adam. Francis. Alan Townshend. Nigel Adams. Mike Pullin. There we are. Nigel Hewitt Cooper. So that is six, one, two. Yeah, so that's six, four. Those against, please unhold your hands up, keep your hands up, if I say otherwise. Thank you, folks. I am going against. Right. Deputy Chairman. Mr. Pullin. To Montag. Yes, it's those who didn't vote for. It's quite easy, really. There's only 13 of us, and it was a seven-six, mate. Really, he's, he's my, you're worth that, I'd say, Francis. Nigel, with reasons, please.
I was up, I recommended approval.
Oh, so you did?
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Short to the vision, I'm trying to.
Okay. So, refusal reasons to be worked out by Chair and Officers. It wasn't.
Just to help, obviously, the Council complete the decision-making process, Chair, you need a reason, and in the debate that you've just had, the concern that was expressed by those members who voted against related to the health impact of the proposal.
There you go.
Can I just add, the health impact of all ages, particularly children and school-aged children in the area.
We'll work out some suitable wording.
We also want some sort of backed-up evidence for 5G, just because this is 3G, doesn't mean it's okay to have 5G.
Yeah. Simon, Simon, Simon Tessa and I will work out some suitable wording around the health impacts. We will sort that out, don't worry, we will sort it out. Okay, so, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We have to. If you're going to leave, all I'll do is I'll call a short break while you clear the area, and then we'll carry on with the rest of the meeting. Please stay. Okay, short break, folks, while we just clear the public area.